Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Hi Ken, I called the meeting to order. Yeah, that's okay.
Same agenda.
It's okay, yeah. Alright, so consider adjustments to the agenda. Are there, do we have any? I don't think so.
The only difference between these two is 4A is not on today's agenda.
Discussion best practices in the office? No, because that's already been worked on.
So it's only on next steps are the two things on.
Yep, next steps.
It's just audit and next steps.
So that's our adjustment.
Maybe a discussion of questions that we want answered to.
Right, should we, could we add that and use that in next steps?
That would be part of next steps.
Next steps, that come out, things that come out of the discussion on questions, yeah. Let's see, so communications and public comment doesn't...
You are live, just let me know.
What's that for, live?
Yeah, in case you want to say something you don't want to say.
I appreciate that, yeah. But you're here anyway, so I still might want to say something, even if you weren't here.
Thirteen second rate delay.
I understand.
Correct it.
So when I say the F word, you can roll it back.
Yeah, you have to say, "I didn't mean that."
Do we need an executive session, does that, should that be on there?
Uh, maybe.
We could add that as six if we needed an executive session.
We gotta add that as five.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Duh, because five is adjournment. Yes, okay, so that's six. Alright, got it. Thank you, Jessa. Alright, so under the topic of new business with discussion and action, I would probably, well, it says audit recommendations. I guess I would ask you how it's been going with RHR Smith.
Um, yeah, as far as going with RHR Smith, if you...
No, no, I mean, what they've been doing, they're already still working in the office, plus they're doing additional work.
Yeah, currently, right now, they're, they're working on their, prioritize that.
Yeah.
They need to do everything in the business office to make sure that everything's done so we get the audit done.
Regular audit done, yeah.
Right, in the process of getting what needs to be done in the business office caught up in regards to the audit, that'll help us get caught up in a lot of different areas as well.
Mm-hmm, of course.
So we have Cindy McDonald and, or is it Miranda McDonald? And Cindy from HR, RHR Smith.
Right.
Who are assisting the business office in getting us caught up for the audit, and then once the audit is complete, we have all the information and everything we need to complete the audit, we will then continue to move forward with the restructuring and efficiency of the business office, which right now has happened simultaneously.
Right.
When the auditors aren't here, you have Cindy and Miranda are here helping out the business office with everything from generating spreadsheets for negotiations to, you know, the different things that we need to, and they've been also meeting with the various individuals in each department to help get a feel of when we start talking about the bigger changes and efficiencies and procedures, what we need to set up procedures. They've already had those conversations. They had, they met today, they were meeting most of the day with Miranda in regards to the accountant piece, and they're already looking at procedures that need to be put in place, either because they are so far outdated, they need to be updated, or put procedures in place because they were never there.
Because there weren't any, okay.
So they've already started working on that.
Okay.
And like I said before, I believe I shared with all of you in regards to the changes I made since the last meeting in regards to personnel changes, in regards to the different departments, and reallocating resources, bodies into that office to get stuff done.
Okay, so there's some of that in the WNEES central office flow chart you've got here.
Most of it is, what I just said is all of it's in there.
Mm-hmm.
And I have another one that's, I've already continued to update and add to because there were some more stuff today that we've discovered.
Discovered, okay.
Yep, and I think the other stuff that I found out today is that we'll probably need to go into executive session for that.
Okay, alright, plus this, okay, go ahead.
Well, I just have a question about the audit. So RHR Smith, as it sits right now with the information they have, they can't complete the audit, is that correct?
Yeah, we're working on, for instance, we're working on, right now Westminster, Athens, and Grafton, bank reconciliations have been completed for them, the high school and the SU, they've completed them up to January, so that's the first thing. We gotta work on all the reconciliations, and when that's done, they can complete the audit.
So they have all the information they need, or at least it's available?
Yeah, and they're working with the office now, so they're able to get that information.
Yeah.
And that was our first priority, is making sure the stuff that needs to get done to have the audit completed is done. Once that's done, then it's, you know, full force.
Did you say they weren't, they, when, you didn't mention was Rockingham's not reconciled yet? Right, you said Athens, Grafton, Westminster, High School, and... And the SU, so that would leave...
Let me see.
That would leave Rockingham.
So today, let's see. Confirmation that the bank reconciliations for Westminster, Athens, and Grafton have been done for the year, Rockingham, Bellas Falls Union High School, and the SU were done through July.
Through July, okay.
I'm, through January.
Through January.
And so, some of them may be a little further than January, but they've all been done for January, and they've already moved forward for the rest of it, so we're very close.
January 2020, right.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so, I thought they were doing, their audit was the one from last year, the 2019?
Yes.
Okay.
The reconciliations for 2019, they've got them done up to January of 2019, the reconciliations.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, see, so they haven't done the rest of 2019, yeah.
So they haven't done, they're worried to June?
Right, now they're gonna, well, I mean, they've got, right, so they have to finish the rest of that. They've got all the other, like I said, Westminster, Athens, and Grafton done, they're...
Okay.
They've had all up to January, but some of them are further along than that.
January 2019, and they have to finish the rest. They can't do the audit until they get done June 30th, 2019.
Correct.
Right, for all of them.
Okay, because their audit only goes through the end of June.
Right, so, but the auditors, you know, they, they know that, and that's why we're getting extra help to get that done.
Again, just a question for clarification, what we're talking about are independent audits for Westminster, Athens, and Grafton combined, the high school, Rockingham, and the supervisory union, so that it's multiple audits.
The multiple audits are the annual audits we have to do twice a year.
Uh-huh.
Because that's what we're talking about here, is those audits here. It's not something separate that we kind of try to procure the services of RHR for everything else that's going on. This is just the annual audits, they do twice a year.
Yeah, July 1, 2019, oh wait, I'm sorry, July 1, 2018?
14.
June, January, Ju- June 30, 2019.
Correct.
Right, correct. And that means, that's only the unified transitional Grafton, Athens, right? Because they existed as of July 1?
No, no, because last year wasn't like that, so it's still broken off as a separate.
It's still separate, yeah.
It was still separate.
Yeah, those, July 1, 2019, right? That's when the new unified...
It's, I guess it was 2019.
19, and they do the previous, they do their previous year.
So next, so next year it will be the Wyndham Northeast Union's elementary sprint.
Two letters.
Trying to remember how long we've been at this.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like longer than a year, yeah.
But, but a point to make here is that, for example, and I'm sure this happened at Athens, Grafton as well, it was reported at the Westminister Town Meeting last Saturday that the audit was not completed.
Yes.
No, it's not complete, that's accurate.
And so they're getting close, is what you're saying, and we need the taxpayers to know that it should be completed.
Yeah, they're happy you're done, no?
Yeah, meet with the auditors on a regular basis in regards to where we are. They'll be back on Friday, and with the help of, on the off days with Miranda and Cindy helping, we finally have the boots on the ground to do what needs to be done to get us caught up and get the audit done.
Can I ask why it, why it wasn't done, like, right after the end of the school year? Right after June last summer, why it wasn't done at that time? Because this has put us way behind.
I would, I would have thought, my understanding was that the business office had to do the reconciliations. I mean, they do their own, and then the audit could go back through them, and those were not getting done, is what you're trying to say.
But those had to get, they're supposed to be done by either the end of July or in August.
Right, so they weren't...
They have to be done for the state by that time, so it seems to me this...
I couldn't give you an exact answer of why, I can, what I'm assuming is that with everything going on in the business office, this was more of that collateral damage that was being done between the finance software, change of personnel in the office.
I wonder how that's usually done? Because I know...
I don't think we have, we don't normally, usually it takes a couple months for the year to close, for them to get all, roll all of bills.
Because we don't get all of our, our state money doesn't show up, like some of the grant money and stuff, I know, doesn't show up till like September, August, September for the year prior. So I'm assuming normally they can't start until that's done anyway, I would think. But, I'm not sure.
When the auditors start coming in here, you know, I mean, in, in the municipality, they usually start somewhere on October, but why do they usually start here?
I'm trying, here, they usually, they came in, and I want to think probably mid to end, I want to say January.
Okay, they want to give us plenty of time to get that, because you can't close your books.
Right, and I think Edie had said that grant, there's certain state monies...
It doesn't happen till like September?
That it's like three months after the close date, when we actually get the money, so...
Well, here, like here, twice a year, it's beginning of the year, and then back in the spring.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's, there's not just one single audit.
Right.
We do two a year, so...
Right, it's quite sizable.
Yeah.
Yeah, multiple entities, so.
Okay, so it's not, we're not that far behind, I don't think.
Yeah, we are. No, but it would be really nice if we could encourage it to be a little earlier so that we had some of that information in looking at our budgets and stuff.
Well, I think, I mean, we're trying to anticipate why this, you know, try to figure out why this happened, like I did.
Yeah.
You know, I checked with the auditors, in the 10 years that Edie's been doing this, this is the first year, so she set a stellar record in regards to getting everything done.
It's been like that.
It's just been that kind of year.
Yeah.
I mean, her track record, I asked, their track record is stellar in regards to having the audits done twice a year. This year is just...
Well, that answers my question about where we are with having the entire calendar year cleared, which clearly not, and isn't, and who knows when it's actually going to get to that point. My request is to find out, to make sure that everything's balanced, and until you do the bank reconciliations for every month, you don't know that.
Right, and so the audit's gonna show that to us, so that's the process.
And they're gonna get to June 30, so, or 2019, but that means that Teresa or someone will have to do the recs for July, August, through the end of 2019 to see where we are. Just, just as a double check, right? So, see if anything turns up.
Right.
Because that's kind of more of what we're looking at.
I know it is, yes, this committee is looking for that.
This is what we need.
But we don't know when that's gonna happen. At this point, we're ha, they're halfway done with the audit year.
Yep.
So that's it.
Right, and I think, like Chris said, they usually, I think the first one, normally it has to be done by the end of the calendar year, and they usually come back in March or April to start the spring, so they're gonna be here right...
If, yeah, considering at this point, yeah.
Yeah, I think everyone's keeping in mind that in education, there are two audits that are get done, beginning of the year, and towards the spring and end of the year.
Yeah, I did know that, yeah.
So the first part of the year, the audit's been done, now we're talking because of last year.
Right.
So now we're talking, we're getting from that point to now, and then, once that's, those audits are done, what Deb is saying is that then it's up to the business office to reconcile the stuff after the audits have, so when the auditors come in again in the fall, they have that information of the reconciliations that the business office did, that's the information they need to start to follow on it again.
Right, but they're gonna be here for the spring audit, as soon as they're done.
They hear it now, yeah, they hear their...
With this one, they'll just start.
Well, this is the fall audit.
This is the fall audit, and it's time for the spring audit.
The spring audit to start, yes.
Well, they, I mean, they're working on their second audit of this year.
So they're already working on this...
Well, no, because they're not working, their audit would be, which should be July till December, probably.
Yeah, those are, I'm gonna have to, you know, not being a business administrator, I'd have to ask the whole timeline of the audits, where they start, where they stop for each, for the cycle, because I, I would only be guessing if I gave you answers now and that would be...
No, you get, we get that, so that's a question, that's a different question, yeah.
I think I'm happy with the status of the audit timeline.
Um, we have, we have the information from, you gave us a copy of the letter that you sent, talked to Ricky, and what he's doing as far as the tax is all going, so there are parts, which...
Yeah, and like I said, there's, and we're getting to that, we're going to executive session, as I said, yeah.
Yes, exactly, also, what about the technology update, 3320?
I think some of that...
The technology update, that would, I think, right now, based with everything that's still open, that would probably be executive.
Okay, and that, and that also includes the attorney letter as well.
Yes.
Definitely. There's a, there's a nice article here on rebuilding trust with your community.
Yeah, I came across that last night around 2:00 AM.
Which, of course, we haven't had a chance to read, so we'll...
But it's, it's good information, because, I mean, that talk about, it just general, there's some stuff in there that really is very...
Thank you.
Appropriate to what we're dealing with and wanting to work on trust with the community and everything, so...
So do we have any next steps for open session?
At this point, I think we'd probably be better off if we went into executive session and then, and then before our meeting is over, have you back in.
Yeah.
To see if we have anything else to say before our meeting ends, and then the next meeting begins, so. So let's see, I'd like a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters that would clearly hamper the, the board if going to the public.
Yeah, and I like to be specific on executive sessions, so, for Suzy Small here.
Well, see, I have, I have one.
It's data security, which is a security issue, and attorney communication.
Yeah, attorney client privileges.
Yep. Would be the motion I make to move into executive session for those two things.
A second, okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussions for, right? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session at 5:30. Working on picking a date...
We're just looking for a date.
It looks, yeah, it looks like we're, we're going to go the 25th of March, or to give time for some of these things to become ripe, right? And that'll be probably just before our next SU meeting this month.
So five, 5:30?
So see, let's say, let's say five, like today.
Okay.
Just to give us the time, because usually the SU meeting's at 6:30, and that way, if we hang over like we did, we'll be good. Is there any other business to come before the committee?
Do want to state no action was taken?
And no action was taken, that's right, for the camera action, no action was taken when coming out of executive session. Hearing no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Either one of us, second, one of us...
Yeah, that's okay. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 I'm gonna call us to order at 6:30. This is the, especially to the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union Board, we're up on Cherry Hill, the superintendent's office, the address is 25 Cherry Street, and let's go around the table and make introductions. Could you start, please, Lynn?
Lynn Morgan, I'm with the Athens Town Board, Athens, Grafton School.
Rick Holloway, Rockingham School Board.
Jessa West Clark, I'm from the forced merger transitional board of Athens, Grafton, and Westminster.
Cheryl Charles, I'm also with that force of wing merge to board, representing Westminster.
Deborah Wright, am I the vice chair here? I think so. And be at, excuse me, Rockingham Bellas Falls Union High School, representative.
David Clark, I represent Westminster on the union high school board.
Chris Pratt, superintendent.
Priscilla Lambert, I'm a representative from the Rockingham Board.
Jason Benson, I'm a representative from the Rockingham School Board.
Charles Chase, I'm from the Athens support.
My name's Josh Aberman, I'm the board recorder.
Do we like to have hands for voting members tonight?
I'm appointing, I am still the chair of the Rockingham Board, so I'm appointing Jason to take Kristen's place until we have our reorganization.
Thank you, Rick, thank you, Jason. Well, alright, do we have adjustments to the agenda, superintendent?
I think you don't.
Okay. Communications and public comment, and I see a hand presentation here. We're not aware of a presentation. Are there communications and public comment from anyone?
I don't know if this is the right time to ask it. I read in the paper last week about the 403B on tuition for teachers, and that we had received some money that was given. How did I know, I mean, I have not received anything. I've called Ameritrade twice, and I'm just wondering with that process, are we gonna be notified, other than reading it in the paper?
The funds, the funds were transferred, you're talking about the possible losses that, I don't care.
Yes, yeah.
The money was transferred to Ameritrade TD, and they had to disperse it out within, I think there were eight people who saw a gain from the report, and we've been told that if you have specific questions about your account, that you contact them and speak to one of their advisors, because everyone's different.
And their answer to that is that I called Teresa at our office, they, twice, I was on the phone on the Friday and today, just trying to get, you know, an answer.
You can call, you can call Teresa, they have the information in regards to, you know, just the spreadsheet that Ameritrade gave us that says, these are the, these are the gains, these are the losses for each individual employee. I will call Jill Owen, she has that information, so she can tell you where you were, a loss or a gain.
So it's up to each person to call the office if it's not gonna be sent out, or I just...
No, because the spreadsheet we have from Ameritrade is list everyone's name on it, and so we can't just distribute that to the general, you know, NEA for that. But, I mean, I, I mean, I've asked the question many times, and I've been told that if people have questions again about their individual 403 account, they should go, they should contact one of the advisors at Ameritrade TD to get how much was your gain, how much were your losses, but if you want that information right away, Jill Owen has that, that you can call her, and she can tell you where you felt...
Okay, but their answer is to turn it right back and contact my district.
Right, so I'm saying, call Jill Owen, she can tell you for you exactly what your losses or gains were for that, because that money has already been transferred to Ameritrade.
Now, the money to Ameritrade has a...
There was a total of $71 and some cents.
Seven hundred and...
Seven hundred and ninety.
Seven hundred and ninety dollars total of gains, the average gain was around $2. So if you call, reach out to Jill Owen, she will tell you exactly what your losses or gains were, because the money was transferred to Ameritrade account last week.
I just want to make a point, you're, we're already under communication and public comment, Rhonda, so you're certainly welcome to have that participation. There will be another opportunity for participation at the end of this agenda, because we have an item on, it's our item number seven called questions and answers, so if any questions should, if you're willing to stick around, and any questions occur to you during the course of the meeting, well, we'll see if we have the answers. Okay, we're still under communication and public comment. Alright then, then I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. It says here superintendent's evaluation, but the purpose is to discuss superintendent's contract, I want to be clear about that. Kind of motion, please. Okay, and you're a voting member tonight, Lynn?
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion, make a motion to go into executive session to discuss a contractual matter which may or may not have adverse effects for either party.
Oh, alright, and I have a second from Priscilla. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, is anyone opposed? Back in open session at 7 o'clock, we were gonna take, no, action on the contract request, which is item 5A, we're up to 5B, which is review advice of counsel regarding depositions. Handout. Two, three. Couple over here. And we'll send a few down here.
I have one, I'm ready. Yes, I do.
David, this is a result of the motion from the last time, so...
We already have, yeah, you have that, yeah.
I, yes, it is a, a result of the motion, I'm gonna hang on to it for just a minute, because I would actually... Okay. Lynn Lynn Blackman and Menitzky dated March 3rd, David Clark, Chair, Wyndham Northeast Supervise Reunion, regarding Williams investigation. Dear David, you asked me to respond to a recent email from you about deposing employees in connection with an investigation that the Supervise Reunion wishes to undertake. You also asked me to describe the rights that employees may have in connection with that investigation. Please consider this to be my response. Depositions are typically taken in litigated cases. Here, none has been filed. Instead, we are engaging in investigation. The investigation will include interviews of employees, which may be audio recorded. The recordings can be transcribed if the board wishes. I presume that at this point, the board would like my firm to conduct the investigation. We can do that. Information gathered and any report generated may be subject to the attorney-client privilege. Of course, the board, pardon me, of course, if the board wishes to waive the privilege, it may do so. It is not unusual for a school district to undertake an investigation where there are concerns about misconduct by one or more employees. All employees must participate in the investigation. If they do not, they may be subject to discipline, up to, and including termination. If union employees face possible discipline for misconduct, we must permit them to have union representation at the investigatory review. I believe the business office is at Will Chris?
Sure.
Okay. The only other rights that employees may have in connection with our investigation is if they face criminal exposure for misconduct. The employees may raise constitutional objections to answering questions. There is a right to avoid providing evidence against oneself. If the employees invoke the constitutional right, the employer may utilize the Garrity case to compel responses to questions. That case requires employees to answer questions, even if there is criminal exposure. The information provided to the employer may not be used in any subsequent criminal proceeding. We have the documents necessary to compel cooperation under Garrity. It's important that in conducting an investigation, that the investigator be polite and respectful. If our firm is, if our firm is going, we will schedule interviews for appropriate times and with notice. However, employees must cooperate with the supervisory union's efforts. Please let me know if you have any questions or concerns. Is there anybody who doesn't have a pocket? Okay. I think that the board needs to understand this. I don't believe that points of law are privileged matters, which is why I have delivered the message here in open session. The item 5B says review advice of counsel regarding depositions. It's listed as an action item, because at our last meeting, we took a motion to require depositions. You now have an opinion from counsel that depositions are not the way to go at this stage. So I would very much like to find out if this board wants to essentially change its mind. A motion might be to rescind the request for depositions and conduct investigations as per the advice of counsel. If we get off of what I would consider to be the public's business, which is taking a motion, and we need to discuss staff, then I think that I would like to hear a motion to go back into executive session, so we can discuss staff. So, it's a pleasure. Priscilla?
Since I made the motion last time, I would make a motion that at this time, we use investigations rather than depositions by Lynn Lynn Blackman and Menitzky. use investigations rather than depositions by Lynn Lynn Blackman and Menitzky.
I want to ask you if you would consider prefacing your motion upon advice of counsel?
With the advice of counsel, yes.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay, Charles has the second.
Point of order.
Yes.
The motion doesn't take action. The motion simply says, we're just swapping the word "depositions" for "investigations."
I'll move that.
So, we should rescind the last motion, is that right?
Do we have to rescind it, or just replace it with that at this time?
I'm not a parliamentarian, I'll take it either way. I think the board's intent would be clear.
I'm simply saying that the motion that you're making doesn't give us any action, doesn't say the board wants the council to go forward with investigations. You see what I'm saying?
I don't like all you're doing is changing the word.
Changing words, okay.
Let me...
But you can make action to...
But the original one was to direct the superintendent to engage with legal counsel to take depositions. So, at this point, I would move that we direct the superintendent to engage with legal counsel to take investigations rather than depositions at this time.
And that was upon advice of legal counsel?
Upon advice of counsel.
And you're...
Someone seconded?
Yes, Charles seconded. You're good with the, okay, so Charles seconded, we have. Now we're under discussion. It's gracious. All right, all right, then. Ready for the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, well, that went quickly. We are under unfinished business for discussion and action. Update on business office matters. Do we want to move to executive session for this, Chris?
I can, we can start an open session in regards to some of the load changes and duties.
Okay, that would be good, if we could do that.
To elaborate on some further stuff, I would request an executive session.
Okay.
So, so, Vincent, based on trying to move the business department in a more efficient way, and we've had, I've had some, I made some changes in regards to the duties of some of the different areas. As of right now, Teresa Taylor will be moving from Accounts and Payroll to Acting Business Manager. Elu Cole, our current business manager, is out on FMLA medical leave. And so, also, Joellen Barton, who was hired to replace Rhonda, is a payroll clerk in Human Resources, will continue her duties there. I will be adding Nicole Barnett, removing her from full-time office reception to part-time payroll clerk in Human Resources and part-time receptionist. She'll be working with Joellen in payroll and Human Resources office. Marlene Lounge was currently the accounts payable, Professional Development requisitions approval and grant requisitions approval. She will now be accounts payable only. I will be moving the Professional Development requisitions away from Marlene Lounge, and between Missy Wilkins and myself, we'll be, continue to work on the Professional Development requisitions. Dr. Carey, the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Grants, will take over the grant requisitions for the grants, because, you know, we're looking to move in that direction anyways, because it makes more sense to have less steps. And then Shawna Cotto, who does the work for Food Services and Special Ed Grants and Accounts as well, she involving, looking over time sheets in the Special Ed Office, will be, will be put back into those, let me back that up a little bit. Right now, Shawna does work for Special Ed and Food Services. Any work that she does with Special Ed has been put back into the Special Ed Office in regards to that, and she will be working on the Food Services piece. That should free up some of her time to work with the business office on other matters, as well as Marlene Lounge. She will free up some of her time to be working with some of the other issues that are going on in the business office. In addition to that, we have RHR Smith, who is also working for us, as they're the ones doing the auditing. They will also be working with us, and they have been in the off days of the audit, of working with the business office as, with all these transitions. They're also lending a helping hand, getting the business office caught up in regards to the current audit that's underway. And also, I've reached out to see if I can get a mentor to come in and work with Teresa, as she transitions to, currently as acting business manager, and she continues to transition to permanent business manager. We did have a few interviews yesterday for replacing the position of Staff Accountant, as we're planning on doing that anyways, in lieu of all this, so there'd be a transition before the end of the year. We interviewed two people yesterday, and we're hoping to interview more in the future. But with the assistance from RHR Smith and their work, they will also be helping with, working with Teresa and the new payroll clerk in their new positions, so we're not taking away any time that Teresa or anyone else has in the office to train them. We'll have people in the building, boots on the ground, to do that. So, currently, that's where we are since last week, in regards to moving forward with a more efficient business office and practices. I met with them today, we're already underway, well underway in regards to looking at our current procedures that we have in the business office. And the reason for doing that is that there are procedures that need to be updated, and there are procedures that need to be created here, because they have not been in place at all. So, we're underway with that, and I will continue to update you as things continue to change in the business office. So, that's what I have right now for public session. Any further information I need to give in executive session?
Let me just ask you a question, Chris. Would I be correct in saying that we do not anticipate any action to be taken as a result of that executive session?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. I'm asking that question because we're down to two of my favorites. Questions and answers and Director's comments. And once we wade through that, then I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. Are there any additional questions that would like answers? Rhonda, anything?
Yes. I'm just curious, you mentioned that Elu Cole was out on medical leave. Will she be returning before her retirement day?
Not sure at this point.
Thank you.
Anything else possibly on TV Ameritrade or any other topic? How about Vermont Digger? Okay, all right. Well, Director's Comments. Start us off there, would you please?
Yeah, I have nothing.
Cheryl?
I actually don't have anything additional right now, but thank you.
Jessa?
The only thing I have, and it's not pertinent, but I did tell a member of the public that emailed us about the Union Elementary, and I did say I would remind the Chair, if she hasn't got an answer today, and she did not get an answer today.
Yes, Cheryl?
I know this is a special session, and I neglected to mention, and I've been hearing from the public questions about our response to the coronavirus, and just wondered if we could address that at some point.
I would like to suspend the rules and ask the superintendent if they would comment on that, as we're under Director's comments.
Absolutely. No, thanks for bringing that up. What I did just pass around to all of the board members is what I have posted on the website, and I also distributed to all administrators, so that can go home to students. And I'm anticipating all this information that I gave all of you tonight, and that's on the website. Parents will be receiving it by the end of the week. And what you're seeing is really, it's a combination of two. Being read on the New Hampshire-Vermont line, the first few pages of the information and the documents that you see were put out from the Vermont Department of Health. The other, when you get to Review of CDC Guidance for Businesses and Employees, actually, one more page, Additional Procedures for WNASU. These procedures here were shared with me from what King New Hampshire had put in place in regards to procedures for the COVID-19 or coronavirus. And the public should be aware is that we're putting this out to be proactive. Hopefully, we'll never have to use them and put them in place, but it was important enough that the community understand that we are aware of the situation, we are taking it very seriously, not knowing, you know, how far this can go. And that what you see online and what you get home, please take time to go through and click on the different links within the posting that is on the website, because there's a lot of great resources there for families in the community. You know, and this is something we all know is changing on a daily basis. But just knows that as of right now, the school defined, there's no cases in Wyndham Northeast. This is just preventative in regards to infectious diseases that we want to keep in front of. It's always nice to be proactive when we spend so much time being reactive. So, that's all this is. But the public will be getting the same information that had passed out tonight, and it's on the website. Our families should be getting that information by the end of the week on Friday.
Thank you, Chris. Does that cover your topic, Cheryl?
Maybe one additional related question. I'm hearing that other school districts nearby are preparing actually instructional packages and such to send home in case there were a school closure, and wondered whether, if we had any...
Yeah, well, yes, and if you look at the second page, that kind of goes...
I haven't had it yet.
Yeah, if you look in here under Additional Procedures, it kind of covers everything through, you know, if someone does go on vacation, it comes back, or, you know, if we come across that, we find that we have been affected in the area. It does go through, in general terms, the procedures that we would like to follow, just to keep everybody safe. So, it's just pretty much an overall awareness that we all want to be on the same page as we continue to go through the uncertainties of what direction this is going. So, that is in there.
David, just on that, I'm assuming that because this is general and this is taken from the state, and as you said from King, that maybe it will be kind of more, a little more specific to our district. For example, does somebody need a liaison, should probably let us know who was appointed?
Well, each school, well, that's been done already, we've already done that. Each school administrator has had been appointed as that point of contact person, along with myself, so we already have that in place. And keep in mind, is that the, so the packet of information that went home, that other district sent home, this is that packet, Cheryl, that you're talking about. In regards to protocols and procedures, the Vermont Safety Guides, they have forms and checklists for infectious diseases that we can follow. So, that's part of the emergency protocols anyways, that we already have the information from the state, and it's there, so we know how to react and who to call. So, you know, as far as procedures, but I think as we move forward to this, this document here should be a fluid document where we can make changes that make more sense to our community and our schools. But for right now, I think this is a starting point, and if things continue to develop, then we will have to go back, and I will go back with the administrators to continue to develop policies that are, and procedures that are more specific for each school community. Even with our own SU, there are going to be uniquenesses for them themselves, so we want to keep in mind that this is a work in progress. But the big item is that we want the community to know that Wyndham Northeast is taking it seriously, and we're preparing as much as we can as the situation develops.
Thank you. That was exactly what I wanted to hear.
Okay, Rick?
I'd like to welcome Jason to our board. I'm excited that we ended up with two new people to fill the empty seats that we had on the Rockingham School Board. It's a new time with Priscilla and George, just completing their first year, so it's gonna be an interesting row, and I'm ready for another year, I guess.
Thanks for bringing it up. Molly?
All set, thank you.
All set.
Charles?
Jason?
Nothing at this point.
Priscilla?
I just wanted to thank the superintendent for all the new procedures that he's putting into effect for the business office, and looking forward to that helping straighten out any things that have been occurring.
Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of business office personnel, and invite administration to attend. A motion, please.
Some aid?
A second?
Second.
Right there. We've moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?